Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ashela is delayed and she will be here in about 10 minutes, so we will begin our meeting with John Morse from our information technology department to talk about a shared calendar.
Exactly.
Great, John. So glad you're here.
He's gonna do some training, Laura.
Oh, training?
I have no clue as to how to use this thing.
Now, this is Outlook?
It is Outlook. It is Outlook-based, absolutely, for our Microsoft Exchange server that serves up this calendar. There are basically two methods of connecting to this thing. One, which you folks are going to have to do because you don't have computers that stand on our network all the time. You're connecting from at home or wherever you happen to be. And then there's another method for connecting for those of us who, you know, your desktop computer, for instance. So I guess we'll go over both, then, if you want to do that.
That'd be good, yeah.
Okay. All right. Great. So for those of you who are out of the office, we will start there. It's very, very similar to connecting to... It's the same process as connecting for your email account, only it's a different account, basically. So you basically go to mail.barnstablecounty.org the same way that you would. And by the way, I will, to your Barnstable County email accounts and actually to all of your email accounts, I'll make sure I do that. Bill, I'll follow up with an email with some basic instructions, too. I'll send those out to you.
I think that would be helpful.
To our own accounts?
Yeah, to both.
When I say "own accounts," I mean...
You mean your Gmail?
My Gmail account?
Yeah. And Bill has a couple, too, but I send stuff to both, so...
Yeah, I will send them to both, too. So, because I have that. Make sure you get it in a timely fashion. So basically, now, the account that you're gonna connect to is COMMCAL, Commissioner's Calendar.
COMM...
COMMCAL. And then the password will be in the email.
Yeah, whatever password you get is what you get.
Yeah.
So the password that I use now to access my email account would be the same one for this?
No, this is a different password.
This is a different one.
How will I get the password?
That will be...
He'll send it to you.
Yeah.
Can they reset it to another one?
Well, it's one that we have to share.
Okay. Oh, I see. Okay. Gotcha. All right. All right.
And then it opens... Oh, do you have a question, Bill?
Yeah. If I go immediately to calendar and I'm not going to my email, if I'm in my email and I set the calendar, do I have to then re-access Barnstable County?
Yeah, you have to re-access it, exactly, because it's a separate account. Right? And Internet Explorer tends to remember what you last connected to mail.barnstablecounty.org as, so you're likely to have to shut Internet Explorer down, close it, and open it up again before you'll get the login prompt. Otherwise, it's probably gonna re-log you in as Bill already.
On the other Internet Explorer accounts that I've used these calendars, I was able to access it while I was in my email account.
Yeah. We can do that only if you have... if you're using Outlook itself. Outlook Web Access doesn't offer that functionality.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. We ran into this before, you know, when we're setting calendars for Children's Cove and some other folks, so... So basically, but again, it looks exactly like the same sort of account. So you simply come down to calendar and you are in the county commissioner's calendar that the three of you are sharing with Mark and Maggie and Kara's helping you maintain as well. So in terms of the calendar functions, it has the same basic view functions that you have on any Outlook Web Access calendar. You can look at it... It's gonna default, I guess, to today's view, the one-day view, the daily view. You can switch to the weekly view and you can switch to the monthly view. And...
Can I then print that out?
Yes. Yes. It prints on most printers. It's kind of... If it's a deskjet printer, you know, it might be a little ink-intensive, but other than that, and the... I've generally found that the month view is the best one to print out as well, so... And I believe when you go...
What format does it print out?
I believe if you go to Print, let's see here...
I think you just had it, because it gave you some questions. It just said, "Do you want it printed out the way it looks on the screen?"
Yeah.
Yeah, "Go to Options." I thought you clicked on John. Yeah, so he has laid out on screen, only the selected frame, all frames individually.
Yeah.
Well, most of the thinking in terms of... I once, I used to use that, you know, when I had a real job, and I could print out calendars in different formats.
Yeah.
I could print out a monthly calendar that I could put in a small pocket.
Exactly.
Or I could print it out for one, for three, let's say for a three-ring binder. Do you hear that with this?
Yeah, you... Well, they generally print out an eight-and-a-half by...
Eight-and-a-half?
Eight-and-a-half by 11.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, you could do... You'd have the same printing options if you wanted to, you know, if you used your printing options to say, "Print two on a page," or something like that. You can kind of shrink it down that way, you know, just with the basic Windows printing functions, taking those... Using those to your advantage, basically. So basically, calendar entries will be entered in...
How are you?
Calendar entries will be entered in here and then you can, just like any other Outlook calendar and Outlook Web Access, you can double-click on the entry and you can look at the detail behind the entry. Where that may, depending upon how you folks want to use your calendar, that... I've kind of created an example here where perhaps someone like Kara actually adds the agenda right into the calendar item.
Good.
And then if you do that, basically, you can access it. And of course, if the agenda has to change, she can go update it in here and then you folks can see the change as well. So that's...
What about the summary of action? Could that be...
That could be added as an attachment after, if this is where you wanted to start to store that record of it. Yeah. Absolutely.
Because then you could open up both at the same time rather than having to go back and capture it someplace else.
Yeah. And then start to use this to kind of build some of your online history for your folks, too. Absolutely. Yeah.
Is that for notes, like, the white script?
In here, yes. There could be additional notes relative to the meeting. I might have another one to show you in a little bit that actually has some notes in it, too. So basically, connecting to the calendar is the same as connecting to your email account, only it's a different account. And the calendar function is the same, the only difference is we are sharing this calendar. It only... The only folks, the three of you will pretty much be the only ones who will have the, you know, username and password, other than us, in case we have to change it for you. The only other folks we've granted access to the calendar are Mark, Maggie, and Kara. So I think that meets what we were looking at, respect.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. And of course, just like any time you use Outlook Web Access in terms of Barnstable County, until we up the security certificates that we do, you know, we advise that you log off and actually close afterwards, so it doesn't leave any cookies or anything open should somebody kind of be sniffing on your machine from wherever you are. Probably not the best way to do that, but to say that, but I think you guys know what I mean. So that's the basic... We went over attachments. The other recommendation is, and this, of course, wouldn't... Doesn't pertain if you're using it from a Mac, but if you're using it from a PC, if you use Internet Act... Excuse me, Internet Explorer as your browser, you get just a little bit more functionality out of this calendar. So that's because it's a Microsoft product, that's the preferred browser. It still will work in Firefox and other common browsers, but you'll see some slight changes in layout if you happen to use it.
So what you're saying is if you're off-site somewhere, like at a conference, and you go into a, you know, the web cafe they have, and you go onto Internet Explorer, this is what you'll get. But if they're using something else, you'll get something different.
Yeah, it's gonna look slightly different. Absolutely.
So if I use Google Chrome, is that the... That's not... I didn't think that was a browser.
I think it technically is, actually.
Is it?
Yeah. So it should work. It may... The layout may be slightly different. And I haven't actually tested it in that particular browser yet, so I don't know if it's different or not.
So John, this is... Walk us through... So most of us are on the fly and we have one of these little things. And what we do is, you know, we'll be at something and then someone will say, "Oh, we have this thing that, Pat, we want you to come to. We want you to give a little speech and give an award to someone."
Yep.
How do you get that in official county business thing?
Yep.
From here onto here? And kind of the corollary is that in her personal life, Pat is invited to a birthday party for her nephew.
Right.
Which she puts in here, but we don't need to know that Pat's going to a birthday party on Sunday.
Absolutely.
We don't care.
Right.
No offense, but...
Yeah. So I think what we're looking... When you're on the move, you probably would have to use... You can only sync to one account.
Right.
So you're still be syncing to your individual account. So probably a little bit of a...
Circular?
Yeah, a little circuitous to do this when you're out on the phone. You could either send yourself an email or open up, you know, a phone that has Internet Explorer. You certainly could do the exact same connection.
I see.
And connect that way, exactly the same way. And I don't know whether you... There was some talk and I didn't really know where that ended up in terms of, were we gonna open you folks to adding your own entries to it as well, or whether we were gonna centralize that in among the three? I just don't know. I didn't ask that question.
I don't think we decided that.
Okay. So that would impact that, too, potentially, you know, because maybe it's simply like an email to Kara or someone like that to add an event.
Oh, okay. So you can't set up, like, I know you can categorize events on here. Is there a way to do it that way so that when you go to sync, only certain category ones get put in here, or no? Because you're gonna be syncing to this account?
Right, because it's... The different account is where we trip, trip over things, yes. So...
John, when I've taken time management courses, the one thing that they emphasize over and over again is that you have one schedule in one, you know, in one location.
Right.
You're now coming up with a separate schedule for professional activities, you know, let's say for responsibilities.
Right.
And then one for personal. Is, you know, I don't know if your question addressed that, but is there some way of, let's say, of having a category within this so that I'm only working with, you know, with one, you know, let's say perhaps with a code so that both personal and professional ones would be on here? Because I can see right away that this could become very chaotic, because in order to make myself available for a public meeting, I have to check my personal schedule to make sure that there's no conflict.
I totally understand what you're saying. I think that the challenge here is that it... We could sync... We could sync Bill's personal and professional schedules and categorize them and sync that to his Outlook account. But what we're trying to achieve here is an account that functions for the county commissioners as a whole and not one of you. And that's one of the challenges there. That's why to do it, you know, there are some benefits to doing it the old-fashioned way, having maybe, you know, nominating one person to make most of the entries, you know, and then edits could be totally different.
Yeah.
Because you really are trying to balance the schedule for a group, not, you know, that's... Your schedule for the county commissioners is different for your schedule, potentially, as a county commissioner, which is also different from your personal schedule.
Well, actually, I have, and Pat does, too, I have another responsibility as an elected official, which has, you know, which has a whole scheduling domain that's part of it.
Absolutely.
And one of, you know, one of the issues becomes, in order to meet the responsibilities of that other office I have there, I also have, you know, a lot of volunteer activity that I'm involved in, that, you know, that, well, it has a, you know, for example, I'm the... I represent my town on the Regional Transportation Authority, which also has, you know, the need for, you know, maintaining the schedule. And sometimes those, you know, those two could be in conflict if they weren't all in one place.
Well, so, John, is there a way... And I noticed you've opened kind of all these other calendars. So you have the K-CAD Commission calendars and we have H1N1 clinic planning, blah, blah, blah. Then you have the Commissioner's calendar. Is there a way in your handheld device to set it so that whatever you have only syncs it to one particular calendar?
Yeah.
There must be, because you don't want all of this... If you're syncing to that, you don't want them on... You don't need them on all of those and vice versa. All of these don't need to be on anybody else's.
Right. It depends on how... That's more of an IT department group answer than a John Morse answer right now, basically. It depends on how much functionality the version of Microsoft Exchange that we are using now has built in to sync to third-party devices.
I see.
And whether we can do that on the fly or not. This sort of functionality that you see here, and it kind of... It's directly related to what we're talking about, and that's one of the reasons I brought it up. You only get this functionality with the actual Outlook client, so when you're physically connected to the network. So that's kind of part of the difference here, and that's where Exchange, I don't want to say lags behind, but that's one of the limitations of using it, at least on the version that we're using.
Okay. But you can set this up, though, to sync to, you know, one account now, and then I could go in in the Settings and kind of switch the account.
Yeah.
And then sync and sync it to a different account.
Yes, so there's a possibility we could do...
We could do that.
That would be different for every type of phone, potentially, too, and how...
Yeah, although I think most of them allow you to do that, because I don't think the issue about personal and commissioners is as big of an issue.
That's the same.
If they all get up on there, you know, we know that Pat's going to her nephew's birthday party on Sunday, it's not a big deal, you know.
I mean, it wouldn't bother me at all.
Wouldn't bother me. I mean, if it bothered me, I wouldn't put it on there.
Exactly.
Somewhere else.
What I'm talking about is a principle of having one place where you put all of, you know, all of your scheduling information, because if there's more than one place, you know, they get lost.
Well, and that's true. Sometimes there's a reason for scheduling another meeting at some point. And you can look at the calendar and say, "Well, Bill's not available that day," or "He is in the afternoon and Sheila can make it in the morning, so let's see if we can't," you know. Then you can set up a meeting without him calling everybody.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, it's how it wouldn't... I don't think that would be a problem if we could do that.
Okay.
If we could get all the information on there. But how would that... What would it look like?
This is how I think it would work. So I have, you know, my regular M. Zolinski account here, and that's what I sync my stuff to. That's been working great. But in here, if you go into then Settings and you go into General, maybe it's Mail, Contacts and Calendars, there's an account. And what I would do is I'd add an account and it would say, what did it say? C-comcal with the password. And when I wanted to sync my calendar to that, I would go into Settings, chain, activate that account, deactivate the existing account, sync it to my computer, and boom, all of my stuff would come up on the Commissioner's calendar. And then when I wanted to go back to sync up with my old other account, which I would do, I would then deactivate the comcal account, reactivate my regular account, do the same thing, and boom, it would do the same thing.
Obviously, we'd have to be careful to really kind of add items only, because we don't, you know, this is... It's still a shared calendar, so we want to be careful, say, if Bill is syncing to it, that he doesn't overwrite something that Kara put in or something.
That's right. It has to be kind of an add, not an override.
Exactly.
But what would it look like?
Oh, it's gonna be busy.
If all of our stuff was on...
Yeah, and you know, you're gonna use a color code, too.
Yes.
Does that give you a color code?
Color code, yeah.
So we each have a code, a color?
Absolutely.
So we'll know that that's Pat's event and my event or Bill's event or...
It does allow you to...
It's a joint event.
To overlap as Wednesdays, because you do see them and overlap.
Well, that's true, yeah. Exactly. It does overlap.
It does overlap, but you can do, but we could do like a color each, that would be our personal color and then maybe a one color for commissioners that we're all engaged in, or we should be or can be, if we can be.
That would work.
Yeah, those Kara can put in, because she can put in the Commissioner's meeting and the Assembly meetings and blah, blah, blah. K-CAD Commission meeting you can put in.
Right. Yeah, exactly. And I believe... I don't think there's any program, and I believe she can set those colors up as well. I mean, I've got that here in my notes to take a look, but I think we can have her set that up at once and it should work.
Yeah, I mean, on my calendar, like, I have a Mac. Is that gonna be a problem?
For the most part, no. You don't... Obviously, you don't really have the Internet Explorer option. Firefox is probably the best bet of the browser to use where you're gonna get, outside the office, you're gonna get the best-looking functionality, the most you possibly can get. That's really the only problem, and I've run into very few problems when I've used it on a Mac.
What is Firefox? That's a...
That's what you're...
Is that what's built into the Mac?
It's not built in. You'd have to download it if you don't already have it. Or we can help you with it.
Is that a safety wall?
It's just a... No, it's just an Internet... It's just a web browser.
A browser.
Remember, what was the one before Internet Explorer that was really popular? Netscape. Remember Netscape? Yeah.
Right. God knows.
Yeah. I know, it is. But unfortunately, Microsoft has stopped making Internet Explorer for the Mac, so...
Now, I just got this computer, so I'm still... I mean, it's the same as the others, but for some reason I'm having trouble with it. But, no, I went into my iCal, which is the Cal. So my calendar comes up. So then, over here, it says, "New calendar group," because you can create...
Right.
And I touched that. Now I can't even get into to do the... Because it looks like it's like...
You sort of missed this spot. To get into this calendar, you're gonna get out of iCal and you're gonna go into Firefox or whatever Internet Explorer you have.
Right.
Because you're really gonna do this all over the Internet.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Safari is my... Is our internet browser, so...
Yeah, we can try... We can try to take a look and see what it looks like in Safari, too. That's no big deal. I mean, it renders fairly well, but I'll double-check that.
All right. Well, I'm not... If there's... Do we have Wi-Fi now that I have a password to get into?
Not in this building, no.
No? Okay.
But you'll get in on... He didn't give out the password yet anyways.
Yeah.
So you'll go log on to the user screen, you'll get... Put in comcal is the thing, and then he'll give you a password. Everybody has the same password. Then you'll be able to go in and see what the calendar looks like.
Yeah.
And then we'll just have to set your phone up so that you can sync between this and whatever other account you want to sync to.
Yep.
So you'll probably have to help us do that.
I would expect, especially since we'll be experimenting on the first one.
Yes.
Yes, if you have an iPhone, you have an iPhone, I have an iPhone, so that's good. And you have a...
He has a PDA.
He has an old, yeah.
Yeah. Palm Pilot.
He's got a crank on it.
Have to get him upgraded.
No, don't suggest that. I don't...
Okay.
I like to use a phone to call people and I like to use a scheduler to schedule people.
He's got... Remember that Andy Griffith was on the other day? Remember, he's got one of those phones that he picked up and he asked for Clara or whoever it was.
You get Clara, don't you?
Yeah.
And you don't have these continual conversations about, "I don't know what happened to my phone, but it's all screwed up again and I dumped it in this." A granddaughter that dumped it, it was a cellphone in the toilet.
Remember those Western Electric phones? You could drop it off a 10-story building, it would still work.
That's right. Western Electric and what...
All right, so what's our next step here? You're gonna email us.
Yeah, I'm gonna email you with the credentials to this account so that you can access...
And that's gonna be to our Barnstable County...
Yeah, I'm gonna email it to both your Barnstable County account and your other ones to make sure that all three of you get it, no matter how I send it out.
Okay.
Okay. And then I've got a couple little research issues here, but I certainly think that we, you know, we'll start looking at the... How we're gonna configure it for syncing. And then we will get back to you to bring in the phones, kind of to sort of plan.
Let me do this. Let me, John, try to set mine up so that it works.
Okay.
If it works...
You want to test the first...
Then I will send you the kind of list of steps you can take a look at. Then I'll send... If it works, then I'll send you guys the steps.
Yeah.
I'll do that. Bill is the wild card. We'll have to kind of look at your PDA and see. That's what you use to sync, right, with your computer?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so basically...
Probably the same thing.
Anybody have a bold iPhone?
Yeah. Yeah, set up just a different set of steps, really, most likely.
And by the way, I'd be happy to dump the, you know, the PDA for something that, you know, as far as the scheduling piece, but I do have to transition.
I think we're just... We're kidding you, Bill. I'm sure that in the PDA is the same step, you just set up a different account. We'll be able to figure that out.
Okay.
Okay.
That's good.
So...
I think that's a plan.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
That'll work good.
So no other questions, right?
Not right now. Uh, not right now. I mean, I'm sure we'll be in your office going over a lot of things, but-
Just to repeat what I understood you saying, that when you set this up, we're gonna have a unique color. We'll have a unique, uh, we'll have a shared password.
Yes.
We will identify professional and personal scheduling information. And, uh, and it will all be collected at, at this one point.
Mm-hmm.
That we can access it with, you think we can access it with Firefox?
Right. Yes, I know you can. It just looks a little different. It's just that Internet Explorer is the recommended.
Okay, well, Firefox happens to be on my, on my personal computer.
Yeah.
And I have Blue Chrome up here, which, Jesus, is something else. But if it's required to go back to Internet Explorer, I could, you know, I could jump-
Just push the Internet Explorer button. It's probably on there already.
Yeah, you're gonna find it installed everywhere. That's right. Every computer ship's looking at Internet Explorer, so.
Thank you.
Great, good, okay.
Thank you, John.
And don't forget to log on when you're done, as John said, yeah.
That's right. We'll fix that after this.
You did dog. How's the dog? I should meet the dog with him one day. I should, shouldn't I? Yeah. She's behaving herself better, they say.
Oh, that was a, I'm not even sure what it is. My staff put that on there one day. I wasn't here.
When the duck, when the duck goes up, the duck is breakfast.
Okay.
Are you done with the internet connection?
Yes.
Yeah?
So, and what I will do is, we'll, I'll just, other than the laptop, I'll just get the other stuff, um, afterwards. So the pendulum will start, so you guys keep up.
Yeah, that's fine.
Great, thanks very much.
Thank you, John.
Okay, Kendall, you're next. This is the septic betterment program update. Kendall Ayers.
Nice, nice to be here.
Good to see you.
Um, I have a handout for you, but I'm here to give you an update on community septic management loan program. Let you know where we are right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, as you know, this is a very successful regional loan program. It's a, um, opposite 5% interest rate loan and a 20-year repayment term for the residents who have failed septic systems to upgrade their septic systems to Title V standards. This program, to give you a little bit of background, where it started. It started back in 1996 with the passage of the open space bond bill. And back then, it allowed cities and towns in the Commonwealth to borrow money for this program, but not entities such as Barstow County. Um, we began administering this program on behalf of the 15 towns in the Cape back in 1998. We took care of all the paperwork for them. We reviewed the applications. We prepared the betterment agreements. We paid the contractors. We secured the loans. Then we shifted all of the burden back to the towns where they needed to, um, transfer the information to their tax rolls. They would collect from the homeowners and repay their loans to the state. So it's a very good program, but it was a cumbersome program. Um, we knew that we needed to make changes, but we wanted to see how things would work out. And they worked out very successfully in the years that we administered the program. On behalf of the towns, we, um, committed $8.5 million for 1,200 projects. And we knew we had something good. We just needed to make it better. Um, and toward that end, we, um, strive for and finally achieved our passage of legislation back in 2006 that allowed Barstow County to borrow money. Um, that was a chapter of 35 of the Acts of 2006, which was the enabling legislation. And since that point, it's been a little over four years, we've committed $15.4 million and 1,420 projects to date. Um, in fact, we believe that this quarter ending in a few weeks, June 30th, that we're gonna be setting a record of $4.3 million for the year. And we continue to, we plan on growing from there, year to year. So, it is a very successful program. You can see the average cost of a septic system upgrade over the course of time has increased. It was $7,000 years ago. Now it's over $10,000.
Can I just ask a question at that point?
Certainly.
Does it upgrade consistent, mostly?
Typically, it's just a replacement of a leaching field. That's the good luck, if you, if that's all is. If you can reuse your septic tank, you need to have engineered plans done, pretty much regardless. Um, you have to replace the distribution box and then the leaching area. And that can range, if you have to replace everything, it depends if your sewer conditions are good, you're looking at $8,000 to $10,000. If they're not as good, or if you need to have a mounded system or pump chambers, things like that, you can look at $15,000, $20,000 very easily.
And is there a maximum that someone can borrow?
No.
No, it can be whatever the cost is.
As long as it's tied directly into the septic system repair, we'll cover the costs, yes.
And how long does the person have to repay that?
20 years.
20 years. And, so say there was $20,000 borrowed. How much would that payment be a year, or?
Well, that's at 5% interest, so they have to pay interest. I think it's probably structured similar to a mortgage, right? It's a flat payment every year. It's a staying payment every year.
No, actually, no. It's simple interest, so the principal is level for the life of the loan. They pay less and less interest, sort of.
Oh, okay, all right.
On a $10,000, I'm more familiar, this $10,000 loan, it's, um, the principal will be $125 per quarter. The interest would be another $125 for the first payment, so you're talking $250.
For the first three months?
For the first three months. And, you know, the interest will decline, so the payments will decline. And if it's a monthly payment, then it's roughly $83, $84.
Now, what if the property is sold before the, the lien?
Typically, there is a clause in the agreement that if the county agrees in writing that we can allow the transferee, the owner of the property, to assume the outstanding obligation. Typically, banks that are, that are representing the buyers, or the purchasers of the property would want this lien moved.
Or the person can choose to pay it off before they sell it.
So from that, that percentage down, it gets paid off, yes.
That's some of the, what, you guys, the chair signs on these? These are all the paid and full, yeah, discharged.
Wasn't there another issue, Kendall, where people were paying it out faster than we'd anticipated? So we weren't making any money on this?
It's gone up from the last time I was here a year ago. It's roughly 16% of the loans now have been repaid prematurely.
We do charge my fee, though.
We do charge my fee. If they pay within the first year, we charge them $400. That's the cover of the overhead administrative costs.
So why don't we let you actually finish your report, and then we can ask, right? You can probably answer some of the questions as we go along.
Fire away. But, uh, as far as what we cover, we, of course, cover conventional septic systems, IA systems. And I think what's something that's really coming into its own now are the sewer connections. So the towns would pay for, or regions, whatever, would pay for the, the infrastructure, but we can pay for the hookup from the house to the street. So that's important.
Is that new?
It's, no.
That's always been in there?
It's always been in there. We just haven't utilized it much. Province town, we have.
Okay, because that happens to be one of the, um, arguments, is now you're gonna have to pay, you know, I have to pay for hookup on top of, now I'm hooking myself up to a monthly something.
Sure.
What about if a person, you know, now with us going forward with, uh, different strategies, and there will be some people who have upgraded in the last, say, five years? And now they're looking at, within the next five years, they're gonna be, being made to hook up to a sewer? Is there any reimbursement, or is there, is there any way we can, um, how do we, how do we? Yeah, credit? Is there somehow something built into that?
I don't know about a credit. I've never really heard it from that direction. But what we try to do is we try to stay proactive. We know the areas of the towns that are gonna be sewer-ing. So if we know that someone is particularly in an area that, in the next three, five years, whatever, um, is gonna be sewer, we'll try to work with the health department to see if we can come up with something mitigating septic system upgrade in the interim.
I see.
Just replace the septic, the leaching area, for example, and not go to an IA system or whatever, knowing that the sewer is coming, so we can limit the cost to the homeowner.
Right, 'cause that's the one component that does glitch with some people, and rightfully so. I mean, they just laid out maybe $15,000 to, you know, be compliant, and now we're finding out that really wasn't getting them into compliance.
I was on the phone this morning with someone over on L.A. Quacka Lake, and she's looking at probably $25,000, $30,000.
Yeah.
Is the sewer gonna actually happen there? You know, who knows? And if it does, when's it gonna happen? And that's a huge hit, for sure.
It is. It was about the upgrade of my mother's.
Quite frankly, she would love to hook into sewer.
Right.
If it's even $30,000, $35,000, she's willing to do that.
But she's got a failing septic system now.
Yeah.
Overtly failed, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a real issue, but as far as giving credits back, I mean, we, we're borrowing the money from the state, so we need to pay that money. The principal has to go back.
Right, so something would have to be done up in the state to put that language in somehow, if it was this circumstance?
What I was thinking was, let's say if the, if the town was going to use a betterment or as, as some form of payment for the sewer, perhaps? Or a combination of a betterment and, and the property tax, or whatever? That if someone had just put in a septic system, say, within the last five years, that their betterment would be reduced somewhat because they had already spent X amount of dollars? I mean, I don't know if that's even feasible, but-
Or you could check or board them a little bit, and then that would, I think, so if this person just put in a new septic system, the person next to them didn't, so right away, when the sewer goes in, this person gets hooked up? Maybe this person doesn't get hooked up right away. Maybe they get hooked up five years. You know, pick a number down the road. You could do that kind of thing, maybe, too.
That's it?
Yeah, I, thank you for recognizing me. I brought a health hat on now.
Yes.
In Orleans, we have addressed this in the past.
Why don't you tell the people at home who you are?
Gassi McCusick. I live in Orleans. I am currently on the Board of Health of Orleans, and I'm serving as the representative of Cape Cod Water Protection Collaborative for the commissioners. But little local anecdote, um, in order to counteract that, um, the main problem was when you sewer an area, you need to provide a volume, a space for that person to hook up. And you need to know what the possible volume is of sewage coming from that property. The decision was made and set up as now as a policy, and it'll surely be acted as part of our regulations, sewer regulations, because we're working with the board, that if a sewer is coming to a street and you are designated to hook up, and you have, uh, what you consider a new system, you can apply for a variance from the Board of Health or from the Sewer Commission. Make sure that your system is inspected and working well, and then you are exempt from that for a period of time. We haven't defined what the period of time would be, but we're talking about the, quote, "life of the system," which may be 20 years. That does two things. It makes them have space provided for them when they need it. It guarantees what that volume will be, but it doesn't make them pay twice. So that's the way we sort of come around that. And it's, we think a reasonable approach is certainly consistent with the other planning. Thank you.
Okay, back to the report.
The next point I have is, it's important to know that we are a self-funding program. It's that 5% interest rate that people pay, and if they're late, unfortunately, it's 14%, but, um, that's what covers this program, and it's, we are, we're certainly running a black mark. Mark knows all about that. But in the 20-year term, makes it something that it's, uh, much more palatable for people to pay us back. Um, we offer a monthly and quarterly payment option. Monthly is new. We've been doing since they run the quarterly, but just this year, we started with a monthly option. We heard from homeowners that if their quarterly payment was $150, if they don't budget properly, that may be difficult for them to make that payment, but the $50 might be something they come up with. So if we can accommodate them in any way we can, to make sure that they can pay us and stay up at 5% interest, that's what we, we wanna do. Um, our loans are, are secured via betterment assessments. They're super liens. Um, they've been tested with foreclosures. They've been tested in many ways, shapes, or forms, and we always get everything, orders back, every, every penny in interest and all the principal. So they are very, they are secure loans.
Is it subordinated, though?
No.
Only to the city's tax, only to the tax, right?
Right.
Like second in line to the property tax, yeah, thank you.
But as far as mortgages go, no, we come first.
Right.
Oh, that's cool.
We've been tested against short sales, for example, too. When we get paid in full, then the mortgagee gets what's ever left over. As far as some numbers go, we've had $3.8 million repaid in principal already. Um, that's out of the $15.4 million that we've loaned out. We've had, there is $11.6 million outstanding principal remaining. We've had $1.3 million repaid to us in interest. And as I mentioned before, 16% of the loans have paid prematurely. But regardless, with the $11.6 million, I mean, excuse me, $1.3 million in interest, we're well on the black in this.
And that's over a 20-year period, we're talking about. These are the cumulative numbers of the last, since this program began?
Yeah, that's over the four years.
Not going back.
Excuse me, that 20 years was four years, okay.
Um, so the way we're going right now, we anticipate 400 loans a year or more. Presently, we have 85 projects awaiting completion. And as we mentioned in the past, the billing and collecting part of this is growing exponentially relative to the, the loan-making. You make one loan, yes, there's a bunch of paperwork that goes along with that, including paying the contractors and recording the loan, securing the loan. But that's a relatively short period of time versus, of course, the 20 years. So, um, toward that end, we recently hired a new person, Cynthia Wallace, who's our third staff person, so, um, we, it's freed up a lot of time for us. We can do things that we couldn't do in the past, and one of them is gonna be advertising more. We're gonna make sure that, we hear, although we tried our best to get the word out there, we still hear on a regular basis, I've never heard of this program before. We wanna make sure that that doesn't happen. We're gonna have brochures that are, are gonna be available on, on all the health department shelves. We'll have those information in libraries, whatever. Take out ads in the papers if we have to.
Do people ever, when they contact you about, um, information on whether they might want to apply to the county program, or say, get a home equity law? Do people ever ask about, or, I mean, where do they go for advice? Can they come to you for advice on that, or do you stay out of those financial advice?
Quite frankly, we seem to be the safety net that's catching people that don't have the options. They don't have the good credit. They don't have the equity anymore in their homes, and they're already, they're using MasterCard to pay their bills in many cases. So we see a lot of those folks. But we have heard people come to us and say, "I can get a better rate at Equity Line Credit." I said, "It's not for 20 years, but, you know, go for it."
And there's no guarantee that that equity percentage is gonna go up in five months, or a year?
How about banks? Do banks know where this program? I can't imagine as many people going into a bank saying, "I need to take out a loan. I need to repair my septic system," but maybe, I don't know.
Um, when this, when this program started back in, in the late 90s or early 1996, whatever, there was sort of a sister program to this, um, where people could apply to, to banks, and you could get a loan at 0, 3, or 5% interest, depending on your income level. You had to pay for the design yourself. You had to fill out an application. Ours is a one-page application. That was a little bit more onerous to fill that application out, and you had to have good credit. So there were a few banks on Cape Cod that used to loan out money. They loaned out very few, or made very few loans.
Yeah, no, I think the question, Kendall, is, is are the banks aware? So if that happens, they can say, "Oh, no, you should call the county because there's this program they have."
I'm not sure about that.
Okay, we should maybe put them on the list, yeah.
Yeah, have a, get a little brochure and send it to the banks and ask them to-
That's Dave Willard.
Yes, now he'd be a good person to help with that.
Absolutely. Now, of course, they'd like to have that loan and the interest themselves, but I mean, if they see that this person's really strapped, this is a place they can point them.
Yeah, and they're usually good about, if there's free money, or, you know, not free money, but, you know, decent rate money out there, yeah, go do that one.
Um, I don't know if you recall, Mark, but there, when we were going forward with the legislation for this language, there was concern from the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And some of the local banks, and we had a meeting in this room, as a matter of fact, and they were, they were concerned to accept that we're gonna be competing with them. But when we told them the level of our loans versus, you know, the level of their loans, that, yeah, it's $4 million a year, but that's nothing compared to the banks, of course.
Man.
But we're concerned content, I'm sure.
There are two things. One, the issue of, um, the overlap that, you know, had been brought up. And I think that it might be useful to think about whether or not we should, or the commissioners should recommend to the Cape Cod Commission to come up with some type of model bylaw to suggest to the towns so that they come up with some type of policy with regard to people who are caught in that, you know, in that part of it. The other thing that, you know, I wonder about going forward is, have we caught everybody that we, you know, that we need to catch with regard to this? The, you know, the, uh, it always seems to me that, you know, you've suggested doing advertising, but don't the Boards of Health, have they not identified areas within their community that are at risk? And, and I wonder whether or not we've, you know, we've indeed, you know, say, found those areas and whether or not we've got any, any sense of the population that's taking advantage of the program and not, in order to clean it up. Nationally, uh, off onsite sewer treatment seems to be the, you know, be the, the mold that, you know, that's used, and that the people are very, you know, very much afraid of putting sewers in, especially with the issue of, is there enough flow rate in order to support, you know, the accumulation? The other piece is, if you've identified the areas that are more at risk, have we also identified, and this is where the Cape Cod Commission comes in, have identified areas that could be prospective sites for locating, you know, the cluster treatment center that, you know, that would support that? I had thought that, you know, that, and I hope that, you know, you're in communication with the Cape Cod Commission about this, because the regional policy plan seems to suggest with their mapping program that this is one of the areas of concern.
Right, we are in touch with Tom Camber, our regular business, for example. But, um, going back to, the towns are very proactive with letting us know where the failed septic systems are. Not necessarily in target areas, but if someone is, if there's a failure, they'll give us a notice of that. If they're, if they deem the system failed, they'll let us know about that, but it's, we don't always hear from the homeowner. The town will make the homeowner aware that there's a 5% rate out there.
I say, have to go to the Board of Health.
Yeah, the system is failing, you know, they're getting something in their front yard or something. And they know they've got a problem, so they, the Board of Health has to get involved. That's, I think they're probably the first stop.
The first stop, yeah. And, and do we reach out to real estate agents? Because when there is a transfer of property, that might be in question.
Yeah, you have to have a test, yeah.
You have to have a test, so, I mean, they-
That's a requirement.
Yes.
You have to have your septic-
But are they aware, they must be in the loop of this information?
Some are, some are not. We've, we've had conversations with the Real Estate Association of Cape Cod, but then there are new agents, and they, some are well aware of this, some are not.
Right. It's like boards of select, they'll change over.
We can reach out to these entities and get the word out to more and more people about this.
The other thing I'm curious about is, how often do you get an application for an alternative system under this program? Any of the IA's, you know, the, uh, not so much a cluster, because it wouldn't work, because that's not a single homeowner, but any, any, any of the new types of, um, uh, alternative systems?
It's not that common.
No?
The most, majority of our loans are the conventional upgrades. But we do IA systems. I was on the phone with an engineer this morning about an IA system going in, but, um, 5% maybe? I don't have the exact number for that. We can get that for you, but it's relatively low.
Well, I know, just in talking with the Board of Health, at least in the town where I live, is the number of IA's that they approve over the course of time, which is kind of interesting. That, and then you wonder, well, if they're doing it, do they even know about the program? If they need it to borrow the money to put it in?
But it would apply to those systems. It doesn't have to be a Title V. It's just an upgrading of a failing system.
Correct.
IA's, conventional, and-
But like a homeowner would have to request they want an IA, right?
No, not necessarily. But many cases, no, the town, the health department holds a ban, but it's not.
Oh.
In fact, the, um, situation I mentioned in L.A. Quacka Lake from this morning, she was going for a conventional, and the engineer designed a conventional septic system, and the town said, "No." Board of Health said, "No, we want an IA up there."
Oh, really? And what would be the, now, tell me, give me an example of an IA as opposed to a conventional Title V?
As far as what the components are?
Yeah, yeah, what is?
What, in this case, it's a- It's a high groundwater area, so, um, there's gonna be a pump chamber, because you have to raise the system up. But they want advanced treatment. They want nitrogen removal also.
So that's what, that's the issue, isn't it? Because they're right on the lake. They want ni, they want more nitrogen than the standard systems.
Those are the ones that you see builds above ground like a bunker?
They're not necessarily IA.
It's got bugs in it, right, that eat something.
There's something additional, right.
It's got, uh, germs in it that eat the-
Yeah, bacteria.
It's a different design.
Thank you.
Where do those germs go?
They live for a while. But I mean, translation, too, when you go with an IA system is cost. Going from a typical $8,000 to $10,000 to-
It's more maintenance-intensive. You have to have inspected, blah, 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 so.
Electricity costs to maintain various pumps and whatever, so.
Right, it can cost almost the same amount of money in the end, maybe double.
I don't know anyone, I've never heard of anyone volunteering to have an IA system.
That's interesting.
We have, I think we have one.
People can put in composting toilets, though. Now, do they have to get approved by the Board of Health?
Yes.
They do?
Yes. Um, I've worked with George on that, and we've talked about having not just a 5% loan, but a 2% loan. I think he was trying to get some grant money.
Yeah.
Because you need to retrofit an existing house to accommodate that.
Right, right.
But we haven't had any takers on that yet either.
Yeah, because you're actually putting an outhouse, I mean, inside that looks much nicer than the used. than it used to. Well, that's what it is.
I saw one.
And it's remarkable. You wouldn't think that it's that, but that's what it is. And...
It's still got to take care of your drink.
But then it's probably, what, $20,000? Just as you say, it's like putting in a new bathroom. I mean, you have to, you know, there's certain components you're changing around in your...
How about nitrox? You haven't, have you heard anybody asking for the nitrox system? The, what is that, a barrier type of system? That Pio Lombardo is marketing?
There are a whole host of alternatives. You know, so in some towns you allow certain ones or are more favorable for some than others. So it really depends which town and even which designer.
I can see that.
Some designers like to take certain systems right off the shelf. They're more familiar with them, but there are a whole host of IA systems.
Well, we've had these discussions with George, John.
I know. You probably don't know the answer to this and it might be a question totally out of your realm, but if somebody is facing a failed system, is there somehow that that, I mean, are there people who do market these various alternative, these IAs, kind of zero in on that as like a marketing tool? I mean, is there any indication that they're kind of looking at that to go to the homeowner and saying, "I, you know, I have something better than what..."
I've not heard of that.
Okay.
It's going to be the designer, I think, who's going to be more in touch with us. So are they marketing to the designers, the engineers, possibly?
Right, okay, okay.
Is there really...
Does it have to have, it has to have board of health approval?
Absolutely.
That's the thing.
So that's what helps you. If the board of health doesn't approve it, you don't do business with it. So if it's...
The state has to approve it also.
Right, and the state.
Right. So if it's not approved, an approved system by the state.
Well, we're glad to know that the program is alive and well. Gussie?
Do you fund condominium associations when they request these funds?
Yes, we certainly do. Anything residential.
Anything residential.
And a cluster system would be eligible.
Absolutely, yes.
It's more, it's more the kind of planning, the collaborative, driving the boat on those. Yeah, no, I'm, once we get to the point where maybe we're looking at putting those in, those would be eligible as well.
Absolutely.
Right. Excellent. That's all good news.
I did want to mention, you guys signed the closing papers for the $3 million borrowing and I just received those back from the bond council, so that should be closing hopefully very, very soon. And so then the next step, next year, next fiscal year, we will need to go to the assembly and get an additional $10 million authorization for this program.
In the past, not knowing how many loans we were going to be making, we have like roughly a two-year time limit with which we can...
Since you're doing, yeah, 4-point heavy, yeah.
So instead of doing a $3 million bond or a $4 million bond, I think in the future we'll do $5 million bonds. Cut down on the paperwork.
Okay, yeah.
Are there any other questions? Thank you very much.
Yes, that's very, very good.
Positive program.
Well, thanks for coming here.
Bye-bye. So, we have...
Andrew, as you know, is going to come in and he wants to talk about the request from the town of Orleans that we received, that you guys have, I think, in front of you.
Is he here in the building?
He's, I haven't seen him yet.
Be here on one. Why don't we approve the summary of action so we can start it on signatures?
Well, did you look at this?
One through 26.
I don't have any questions on it, I'll move on.
Yeah, I don't think I did either. I just want to make sure there was nothing added in the end. So I will make a, did you just make a motion a second?
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, none. Three in favor, motion carries. Okay. Want to start writing, signing?
Why not?
Should we just take a, oh, you, you report?
I have a couple, yeah, you want me to report? Yeah, I was just going to report that Pat and I were at the MACRIS, which is the Mass Association of Contributory Retirement Systems Spring Conference. They do that on the Cape every year. I still card the Sheraton Tara, but it's, I don't know what it is now.
I know. Resort and conference.
Yeah. And just to let you know, we had two excellent presentations. I thought we had a good legal panel today, which talked a little bit about the open meeting law. And the gentleman from the Attorney General's office, as you know, the Attorney General's office is now responsible for enforcement of the open meeting law on the effective date, whenever that is. He gave a presentation yesterday. So, there are a couple of impacts that I just want to make sure that you're aware of. You have a report also from Bob Troy and those impacts, I mean, Bob's memo as well. One of the most significant ones and one that got kind of the biggest groan today, I think, is now your notice has to have 24/7 access to the public. And your website is not sufficient to accomplish that. So, we're going to have to come up with some kind of methodology where we post it. I think, you know, temporarily, if this goes into effect on July 1st, we'll probably just post your meeting on the back door. The assembly will have to do the same thing. And of course, the Cape Cod Commission, all its subcommittees, all of those, you know, public bodies as they're known, they're all going to have to do the same thing. So, I think long-term, what I'm probably suggesting we do is have John Blaisdell, the facilities director, look at getting an outdoor, weatherproof booth in board, basically, with a light on it and the whole nine yards. And we'll put it up out here in the, probably legal and Barnstable's zoning, but we can put it up out back and put up basically a posting where we'll post public meetings.
Where does the Cape Cod Commission post there?
Well, they're doing the same thing we are right now. Usually you post it in the building. You're supposed to, I know Kara sends it to all the town clerks, which you still have to do. None of that has changed. What's changed is the 24/7 access to the posting.
For the public.
So, for the public. So, I would just say, Bill, they were suggesting today that a town post all their meetings in a building that's open 24/7, police station, fire station. We don't, we don't have any of those buildings.
But since we send our notices to all of the towns and they post all of the notices that they're required to post.
But we have to have on our own site for county commissioners because you meet here, it has to be here.
Great concern of anything that's powered, you know, by, or required.
Well, you do have a solar light.
Yeah, you can have a solar light.
Why is there any requirement that it be powered?
Well, because they, because you have to be able to see it 24/7. So if I put it up in the dark, then someone theoretically could come along and say, "You know, I went to look at that meeting at 3:00 AM and it was dark and I couldn't read it." And it's like, then they would go to the Attorney General and the Attorney General would contact me and say, "You're in violation of the open meeting law."
It seems to me...
I would say, "Okay, I'll put a ball by it." So I might as well just start putting, Bill.
Believe me.
Don't start.
You can't.
We're all groaning.
It's a requirement. It has to be done. That's just how it is.
I think the good news on most of what we do already is it's not a huge impact. And I was just, on the presentation yesterday, in terms of our agenda, the only change, because now the chair has to include anything that may be reasonably discussed at the meeting. Personally, on our agenda, which I think is, is a pretty decent agenda, you know, they were talking about some people have old business, new business, and that's not going to cut it anymore. What I'm going to add under the, you know, basically under public, the public comment bullet here is I'm going to add, basically, the commissioners may discuss regional government programs, departments, activities, and policies. And just leave that as a general, I think we may, anytime, we may discuss that stuff.
But the point is that if a member of the public comes in and makes a comment, I know that we have the discretion to say that we can take it under advisement. But many times, you can resolve it by just answering the question.
I know, and, I know, Bill. And so some of this is going to have to be common sense. And so that's why I think if we do stuff like that, that will cover these bases. Today, the woman from Murphy, Hesse, Tumi, and Lane basically said, if this happened, yeah, and she's very good.
She's really good. I've heard her many times.
But of course, when the lawyers get involved in advising you, they're going to, they're going to go into, I hate to say it, cover-your-ass mode. They don't want you to get in trouble. So they're going to say, "Well, we can't talk about that now because it wasn't on the agenda. We'll talk about it next week and we'll post it." But you're absolutely right. Someone may come in, ask a question, and you could address the issue and have it go away. So...
Because I think our responsibility is to respond to the public's need for information.
That's right. And you do that. And you can do that in the meeting. But let's say we decided today that we, well, actually, we did decide today we're going to talk about the collaborative and there's other things that's not on the agenda.
Yeah, well, that didn't come up until Monday, I think.
Come July 1. Well, that's true. Well, but that would have, yeah, till Monday. So, if it comes up within a 48-hour time, because you have to do it, you have to post with, prior to 48, at least 48 hours.
So the requirement is, as of the time of posting, did you reasonably know that you were going to discuss that?
No, we didn't. A lot less.
Right. So that's, that's what you have to prove if it's been questioned.
Right.
And what if the person, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The other specificity piece is, like for instance, where it says shared calendar, we would have to be a little more specific about what that means.
Yeah.
You know, a shared calendar for, for commissioners' meetings, something like that. Be a little more specific. So if somebody looking at it, say, "Shared calendar," wouldn't mean anything to anybody except to us. So, that would be a little more specific.
And in the minutes, I have to now include like a brief description of what the discussion was.
And any documents that we had in relation to our meeting have to be listed in the minutes.
Now I have to list this document. Gussie actually was, made a point that one of the counselors that she was talking to said, "You have to include those in toto, you know, gather them all." She was the example of the London phone book. They said today, and I believe they said yesterday, that you didn't have to keep them, you had to list them in part of the minutes. And if you were responsible for keeping that document, for example, if it's the county budget, which I am responsible for keeping, or I have to have a copy available. I don't have to include it with the file for the commissioner's agenda.
I mean, suppose we talked about the RPP six times in a year. You wouldn't have to file that six times. You'd just refer to the document.
And what if somebody comes forward and, kind of like what we did the other, Mr. Andre, they come forward, they pose a question, and we actually do engage, and say it's something that we can simply answer, and we do. Is there, are we required to kind of put it on the next agenda just to review that conversation for the public? Because now they know that that was, an issue that was brought up? Is that a way to cover that?
I don't think so. But I think in the case that you mentioned, what we should have done and what will be required to do is to then put that on the agenda. Because we reasonably knew that we were going to talk about that. Because we said we were going to talk about that.
And we were just assuming that that was an understanding and actually should have been.
What might be a good idea is to make copies of the PowerPoint that Catherine had.
I have to get those, yeah. She didn't hand them out.
Oh, they were in the back of the room. You didn't get one?
No, I didn't get one, no.
Oh, I picked up one, but I left it in the car. So I'll give it to you.
Bring it in and I'll make a copy.
And you can make a copy and everybody can actually see from her PowerPoint. It was very inclusive. It was very well done.
There's a question that I'll ask from now on, because if there is a question asked by the member of the public and we answer it, I will, I will take the position of, if it's been asked and answered, then it can, then we don't have to do anything else.
Then it's not, yeah.
And I might, and I might indeed, in order to be sure of that, I might indeed ask that. It'd be my opinion that the question was asked and answered and it's, doesn't require us to go, you know, to pursue it further.
No, there's nothing in the open meeting law that talks about follow-up. It's only the agenda of the meeting. And, and that you reasonably, the word they use is the chairman, the chairman, reasonably present, prepares all the topics for discussion. So that, but then if something comes up within, after the meeting's been posted, then you can reasonably discuss that also.
For example, this discussion on the open meeting law, I didn't know we were going to have it because we had some stuff on that from weeks ago, but there were a couple of points that came up today and yesterday that I thought were important that you guys should know about. One of which, I just want to end with this, is the implementation date, as you know, is July 1st of 2010. However, it's got an asterisk next to it, there is apparently attached to the Senate budget, an amendment to the implementation date for certain provisions, which would make that November 1st. But no one seemed to know which provisions that applied to or how that would work. So...
And then the other piece to that is there are still certain cases to the open meeting law changes, from which there has been no guidance yet from the AGs.
Attorney General, right.
Yeah, it's, they're still waiting for further guidance.
Okay, and so in the minutes, like of today's meeting, would you then have to put that, you know, this was an unanticipated conversation, but it was one that was timely and important to relate, and that's why it happened?
It came up on Tuesday and Wednesday of the...
And that's why it happened.
Within the 48 hours.
So you would just make a note of that to cover why it was even brought up?
And in that PowerPoint presentation, to best your recollection, does it cover the protocol that you need to use going forward for these, I'd say, unexpected or unscheduled events?
Yeah, it makes it, you know, you can't, it's kind of a two-way street, Bill.
I'm talking about reporting on it.
No, I'm just saying, what the public brings up to you, you can't control them. You don't have any control over that. They were advising you, though, if you're going to get into a voluminous discussion, that you basically should say, "That wasn't on our agenda. We'll defer that to the next meeting." Yeah.
I get that part of it. But there's also, of course, you know, a certain amount of,